So I think we're ready to call this meeting to order. So I'm calling the meeting of the Williston City Council of April 28th to order. And pursuant to state laws with the pandemic, we're meeting by Zoom. Or not Zoom, but by telephonic methods. And I will have Kathy lead us in the pledge to flag and roll call.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes, here. All right. So the first item will be a request to add an agenda item. And that would be for item 5F, we would be adding, if you approve that, a second resolution which authorizes the application to the Director of Industrial Relations of the State of California to, for certificate of consent, to self-insure our workers' compensation liabilities. And that's so that we can join the joint powers authority to, for our mutual insurance situation. So.
So moved.
Okay, moving by Jerry Gonzalez. Second.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina also had her hand up. Larry spoke first. So any questions from the council? Any comments from the public on this, adding this item? It's not on the actual item, but just adding it to our agenda? Seeing none, I will have Kathy call the roll. We have to have a two-thirds vote to add an item to the agenda. Go ahead, Kathy.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So when we get to that item, we will discuss that. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the council at this time on matters that are not on the agenda but are relevant to the city? And so you have three minutes to do so. And please say something or wave your hand if you wish to. Gary Martin, I see, yes. Why don't you go ahead then?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Strong, city council members and staff for doing what you do. It's a pleasure to see you all. My name is Gary Martin, and I'm here on behalf of the Williston Center for the Arts and a citizen who would like to see public art in our community along with, well, so far we have 357 signatures in favor of public art. I was sure several months ago before the virus had come to light in America, at that time a representative statue was, that was to be carved into a totem. And no one seemed to like it, though. So this time I'm coming to you with a new idea for our community and new idea for repurposing wood into art for our parks. We would like to recommend a series of sculptures, one on a vacant spot on Route 20 and 101, the other in Babcock Park. We respectfully request an opportunity to present our ideas for this project to city council. We will present drawings of the proposed sculptures and details concerning this proposal. We would like to do this at your next meeting. Thank you.
All right. We don't act, as you know, Gary, we don't take action at this meeting on that. But our city manager Bender, what is the process for having, adding a presentation and a request to our next agenda?
Basically, I submit the materials to myself or Jeff Moorhead. We'll process it and place it on the agenda with the supporting materials.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Great. Any other comments from any members of the public here? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our Public Matters. Section, or item 3A is a public hearing to consider the proposed Little Lake Fire District impact fees pursuant to the May 2020 fire impact fee nexus study. And I'm sure we have someone here to lead us through this discussion. Who is the presenter?
Mayor Strong and members of the council. My name is.
I'll start first, Chief Wilks.
So Chief Wilks, are you going to start us off? By the way, I just saw another member of the public who showed up.
I was.
I'm just wondering if she wanted to address the council during public communications, if she just got in. Janay, are you wanting to do a public comment? Or are you here for an agenda item or just general interest? Oops, you're muted. Can't hear you.
Just general interest.
Just generally?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Just general interest.
Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and have Chris Wilks introduce this item. And go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. With me tonight I have our chairman of our board, Tony Madrigal, and Blair Ross of the SCI Consulting Group that we have worked with to build this nexus study and complete this nexus study. We're happy to finally get it on the agenda. And I want to thank city staff and Jim Lance for his help in putting this package together. This is an important thing for the fire district moving forward. It's to help us ensure that if and when we get development within our city limits, it allows our fire district the ability to keep the same level of coverage and same level of service to our community. It's a, this is a common thing that happens with municipalities and certainly with special districts. And Blair has put together a nice presentation. And we have all the supporting material to answer any questions that the council may have.
So Blair, would you? Go ahead.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor Strong and the members of the council. And thank you, Chief. Again, my name is Blair Ross and with SCI Consulting Group. We are a public finance consulting firm. We help, we've been serving public agencies for about 36 years. And really, the mission of our firm is to help public agencies establish new taxes, assessments, fees, charges, new funding for budget shortfalls, new service, new programs, capital projects, what have you. And so we help, we help public agencies with the financial analysis, the legal process, and the political process to establish that new funding. And we have been, of course, retained by the Little Lake Fire Protection District to prepare a fire impact fee program. To just have a brief presentation for you, to give you an overview, the council an overview of the fee program and the public as well. Kathy, if you would advance the next slide, please, appreciate it. So what we're talking about tonight is a fire impact fee program, specifically a development impact fee program. Again, development impact fees are one-time fees charged at the time of building permit issuance. And these monies go towards expansion of the infrastructure of a community. So as any community grows over time, you're going to need to expand the community infrastructure, whether it be the schools, or roads, or parks, or in this case, the fire system. And so, and again, as the chief had indicated, these are very common fees for public agencies across the state. And it just really allows for, again, as the community grows, that the cost of that growth is not borne by existing residents. It's actually more borne by new development. So new development is paying its own way is sort of the principle behind these types of fees. And so the proposed fee program is not only for the, for, would be, is being proposed to be imposed by the town, but also in the unincorporated area by the county of Mendocino. And the reason for that is that the fire district as a special district has taxing authority but does not have land use authority. So for special districts, they need to work with the land use authority, typically the town, the city, or the county to have them levied on your behalf. So that's why we're here before you tonight. So in preparation of this fee program, there has been the preparation of a fire impact fee nexus study which established the legal and the policy basis for the imposition of the fee. And it meets all of the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act, which is that act that governs how these fees are not only to be determined, but also how they're to be expended, accounted for, reported, and collected. And so that study is available. Again, so when we talk about that it's a fire impact fee program, these fees are then, you know, it's a one-time fee. And it would go towards expansion of the district's fire and emergency response system. So we're talking anything, anything having to do with capital facilities. So stations, buildings, apparatus, other vehicles, and equipment. And so to be clear, these fees cannot be used for any existing deficiencies like renovation of any other facilities. They can't be used for personnel costs or operational costs. It's exclusively for capital expenditures. And so what the district is proposing tonight is, is that they're asking the council to impose these fees on their behalf. But largely, the fee collection, the accounting, and all the reporting requirements annually would largely be borne by the district with a little bit of help from the city. And I'll get into that here a little bit later. And then, and also just wanted to make, make the point too that the district is proposing, and which is common for these types of impact fees that are levied for a special district on behalf of a city or county, the district is actually proposing to indemnify the city in the rare instance that there is any legal challenge to the fee or the administration of the fee. So I just wanted to clear about that. Kathy, if you would advance the next slide, please? So here are the proposed fees. And technically, it's a, it's a fee schedule. And one of the reasons behind that is that the Mitigation Fee Act, one of the nexus requirements is this concept of rough proportionality. And so that requires that you, you just don't establish one fee. It's a fee for different land uses because they have different demands on the fire system. And so we have for residential development, single-family, multifamily, and mobile homes, which are very common for residential development. And then we have five land use categories for non-residential development. And so you can see, you can see the fee, the different fees here. And again, these fees are expressed in terms of a square footage fee. So it would depend upon the size of the hall or the size of the non-residential structure. And the reason that that's, the reason that that's done is specific formula for accessory dwelling units. So that's commonly referred to like as a granny unit or a second unit on a single-family lot. And so under the law, any accessory dwelling unit that's less than 750 square feet would be exempt from these fees and any other type of development impact fees. But something greater than 750 square feet would be subject to a formula based upon whatever the size of the structure that it's being placed upon. And so that's indicated in the footnote, the footnote below. And I'll also just add while we have the fees here. Again, so these are just one-time fees for new construction. So if you did have an instance where you had an office that was being demolished and being replaced with a larger office, you would, that office development would pay the fees expressed here. But that space that just got demolished would receive a fee credit. So we're not, so we're not talking, these fees would not apply to any renovations of any structures. It's just new construction that's adding either new living area or new building smurfing to a parcel. Next slide, please, Kathy? So again, as I've indicated, because the district does not have land use authority, we're asking for the city's land use authority to impose the fees on their behalf. And, but we want to keep, the district is proposing to keep the work to the city to a minimum. So we would work, we would, we were proposing that we work closely with the building department that when an applicant for a new development project comes, the city would include that in the list of other fees or at the time of building permit issuance. And then they would go to the fire department, pay their fees, and then the fire department would send them with the certification that the fees have been collected. And then they'd take that back to, to the city's building department to finish their building permit. So it's the fees being imposed by the city but collected by the district. And then the district would take those proceeds and put it into a special fund so that it can be, it won't be commingled with any other fees and that it can be properly expended and accounted for that's required by law. As part of the development of the fee program, what is common, and we have included, 4% for annual administration of the fee, which involves any other associated costs to annually administrate the fee. So updates to the fee program, the preparation of the annual report, the five-year report, the time of the town to collect the fee. And so what we're proposing is that the city would take 2% of that fee and the district would take 2% of that. And then, and then every year, the, what the district is proposing is that it ought, that the fee automatically be adjusted for inflation based upon the change in the engineering use record construction cost index. And so this is very common, not only with taxes and assessments, but development impact fees as well. So that the fee, because it's recovering costs, are eroded by inflation over time. And what we're proposing here is that it be automatic in that the district board and the town, the city wouldn't have to do anything beyond just looking annually at this, the change in this construction cost index and then apply that increase to the fee. So the fee would just automatically be adjusted. However, certainly at any time, if the city council or the district board wanted to propose a lower, a lower annual adjustment or no adjustment at all one year, that would certainly not preclude the city council or the board to bring that forward. It's just without any action of the board or the council, it would just automatically be adjusted. And then, and we believe that that's just really a good use of time for the city and the, and the district not having to go through all those procedural, procedural steps every year. It was very efficient. And then I indicated, I already, I already talked about the, the one exemption for accessory dwelling units under 750 square feet. Kathy, if you would, maybe advance the next slide? Again, I won't go too far into this, but this is just a good chart. It's also in the nexus study that very clearly lays out how these fees are to be expended. And I guess the way that you can look at it is in general, if it's, if it's expanding the fire system, it's adding new square footage or additional apparatus, additional vehicles, additional equipment. It's expanding the fire system, that's an allowable use. Anything that's renovating of a station or replacement of an existing apparatus is not an allowable use. However, we have made one, there's one exception to that, and it's justified within the nexus study where if the, in the district's replacement schedule for their apparatus and vehicles, they can, they can use development impact fees up to 22% of that cost. But the law requires that anything beyond that has to be funded with other funding sources. Right? Next slide, please, Kathy? Again, I indicated that the Mitigation Fee Act also has specific reporting requirements. So at the end of every fiscal year, there's an annual report. And it essentially just states the beginning and ending balance in the fund, how much money was collected, how much money was expended, and what was it expended upon, for the most part. And then every five years, there's another, a findings report that just sort of, is sort of a check-in. You sort of have to justify that if you have money still in the account, that there's still justification to use that money. And you have to have a detailed plan on exactly how you're going to expend those proceeds. And that's done in conjunction with the annual report. But I just wanted to be clear that these reports would be prepared by the district, approved by the district board. But because you have land use authority, they would be filed with the city council. And we can, we can talk about that process. But they, so it would, so these reports would be going before the city council for your approval as well, but largely prepared by the district. Next slide, Kathy? Thank you. And again, I've already alluded to the accounting requirements. So the district would put these into a separate fund so they're not commingled with any other funds. And they'd be expended solely for the purposes that they're collected, which is essentially facilities, equipment, and apparatus. And then last slide? So the, the fee program was presented as an information item to the district board and the public last May and June. And then in July, the district actually held a notice public hearing. And they had adopted a resolution that essentially approved the nexus study, which is that legal and policy basis for imposing the fee, the fee schedule, and then made a request that the city council and the county adopt the fee program on their behalf. And just as since I mentioned the county, we have also been working in conjunction with the county as well. They are considering this fee program along with a similar fee program for the Anderson Valley Fire Department. And that'll go before the county in, in June. And just as a, a similar fee program has already been adopted and passed for the Hopland Fire Protection District. And that was actually done, I think, in 2018. So this would be sort of the third fee program that I'm aware of in the county. And then so, so tonight is just merely, we're just presenting the fee program to you and the public. And then the next step would be for the council in May to consider an ordinance that would essentially enable the fee program and set the rates for the upcoming, upcoming year. So that would, that would occur generally in May. And then the law requires that the, the fees would become effective 60 days later. But with that, that's just our quick overview of the fee program. Are there any questions that the chief or I could answer? Yes?
Can we see the screen again, Kathy? So the procedure here will be first, any questions for clarification from the council members? And then opening the public hearing and hearing from any comments from the public? And then bringing it back to the council for action? So I don't, oh, I need to, I need to un-hide everybody. There we are. Okay, any council members have any questions for Blair or for Chief Wilks? Jerry?
Yeah, kind of, kind of more of a timing question. I know that some development come for us earlier this year. And I get this if I were going to put in, let's say, 100 homes three years from now and ask this, like, how does that work for anything we might have approved? Maybe hasn't been built yet? Just timing wise, I'm just going to give you these.
Well, the, the fee is collected at the time of building permit issuance. And so I think based upon the timeline, we're projecting, if we stay on that timeline, the fee would become effective in, right around July, the end of July. So if that development project came later to pull, to pull permits, then the fee would be, they would be subject to the fee. And certainly, it's your authority if you wanted to, you know, grandfather somebody in or something like that. But that would be, yeah, it would be, so pretty much if that building permit was pulled, it doesn't, it doesn't, the timing isn't whether their candidate map was approved or final map, it's really when the building permit was issued.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Yes, I believe when you were talking about the impact fee schedule, you mentioned that there were four categories under residential development. Or you said eight, but I only see four. Is there more to this?
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. That's sort of my, there's, there's actually nine there. But accessory dwelling units, I was sort of labeling as a special ninth. It's actually eight, yeah.
Okay, but residential and non-residential. There aren't eight resi-
Yeah, so we analyzed, not to get too much in the weeds, but we analyzed the impact for eight of those land use categories. And then we created the ninth category for accessory dwelling units because the law requires it, so.
I think you had said eight residential categories, but it's only eight categories total, so, okay.
Categories total. I apologize.
That's okay. That's, Sabrina? Yes?
Yeah, I had a question. When is the, what are we, what are our neighboring communities charging? Do we have neighboring communities that are charging, charging for the fire impact fees? And if so, are there, was part of your calculations, did you factor in what rate they were charging?
Yes, very good question. So the answer to your second question is no. So that the- So the determination of the fees is very specific to the district, the district's demographics, the district's fire system, and everything else. Everything is done very locally. So we can't consider what's going on in other districts, we can't look county-wide for the most part. But again, so this is not the first fee, this would be like the third fee in the county. And the Hopland Fire Protection District, their fees for a single-family home were about $1.91, $1.91. Anderson Valley is proposed at $2.13, though I'm rounding here, but roughly about $2 each. And, but for Little Lake, it's about half that, so the fees are a little bit lower. Why is that? Part of it has to do with that those other districts are primarily rural districts. So they're serving, they have a large fire system, a large geographical area, a large fire system, but a very small population, and the fees are actually based upon the existing level of service. But what we find is, when you have a more urban, a more urban part of the district, then you have a system that's spread amongst more people and more businesses, and that actually ends up lowering the fee. And you probably find that commonly as well. If you're a small community, if you've got a water system, it's going to be really expensive to spread the cost over 100, you know, 100 homes. But if you've got 4,000 homes, or, you know, well, then that same cost is much, much less. And so that's really the dynamic here. And this is probably my third, I'm on three dozen of these types of fee programs for fire districts, and I can just share with you that that's very common. The more urban that the district gets, the fees come down a little bit. But I would represent that these fees are in line with not only the fees of the other two fire districts, so it's the same methodology, the same approach, the same methodology approach that is very common for these types of fees, but it's also been approved by the county already once for the city of Hopland, so they've already contributed. And then I would also represent, if I was to look at these fees statewide, and the type of district, they're very, they're very in line with other districts as well.
Thank you. That was very, very informative. My last question for Chief Wilks is, could you just remind council and public that may be listening of the, just briefly, the boundaries that encompass the fire district?
Yeah, our fire district is 242 square miles. That doesn't count our sphere of influence, which pushes it around 360 square miles.
So I have a question sort of following up on that. If the county portion of Little Lake Fire District's service area also imposes a fee, is it going to be the same per square foot? Because that is much more rural, and fewer residences and commercial buildings and so forth that would be built in the county and the unincorporated area. But is it the same fee schedule?
Yes, so it's a, it's a system-wide fee, and they're proposing that we, so the fee would be the same in the county as well as the city. Yes, across the whole district. But the district would have a separate fund for the county's fees, and then a separate fund for the city's fees, so that they can be accounted for properly. But, yeah. It's a little word to be there.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Yes, Greta?
Just, sorry, one last question. Has there been any consideration to fees for warehouses that might contain, let's say, more flammable materials or potentially more hazardous materials that they use in-house?
Yeah, there's not really, there's not really a way to go down to that depth to be able to create separate fees for that type of use, and that can actually change over time as well, so the answer's no.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, you know, there's still a special tax that we have that we sort of live on or are general budgets on, and that special tax captures the annual taxes being paid by a building for the occupancy of that building, and what's in that building, and what the, what the use of that building. You know, these being development fees, it would just be for the construction of that facility.
And I guess one last question I have is, the fee, the amount, has been based on, not just on square footage, but on sort of the anticipated additional facilities and equipment that the fire department expects to need to serve that additional development. So you actually have sort of projected the costs going into the future, and that's how you came up with these numbers. Is that right, pretty much?
To some degree, yeah. It's, the fee is actually, it's called, it's open-ended, so it's not, so these fees may, but they don't necessarily need to be based upon like a capital improvement plan. So it's based upon actually the existing level of service. The way that this would work is that the revenue that's generated represents, in theory, it represents just enough revenue to be able to proportionally expand the fire system. So in some ways, if in the next 10 years, it's 5,000 new homes in the district, well, then it's going to provide enough revenue to proportionally expand the fire system. But if it's, but if it's only 500 homes, it'll be less revenue, but there's not less need to expand that fire system. So that's, that's how it, that's how it works out. But we have, in the study, have done a projection of possible development over the next 20 years, just to give the reader a sense as to perhaps how much revenue could be generated from the fee program. And as well, there is a capital improvement plan in the Nexus study that indicates what the district's capital improvement plan is for the future. And of course, these monies can only be contributed towards those that, again, are expanding the fire system, not those ones that are fully replaced, so, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other clarifying questions, we're going to open the public hearing, and if anyone in the public would like to address the council regarding this item. And I'm not hearing any. So I see that we're not really taking a formal action at this time. Do we need to have an informal, or are we just going to put this back on the agenda with the ordinance? Jim, are we taking action tonight? Can't hear you.
No, we're not taking action. This is a public presentation that precedes the noticing and consideration of the ordinance.
Okay, so there will be a public hearing-
And that's a reason there'll be an ordinance for your review and adoption.
Okay, and there will be a public hearing on that item as well. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Blair and Chief Wilks. I hope it's very informative, and sounds like you've got a good proposal coming to us.
Great point. It's a consideration.
Yeah, I feel. Okay, so then, moving on, our next item is a public hearing regarding future applications for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, familiarly known as CDBG, and consider adoption of a revised resolution that authorizes middle of application on the 2020 CDBG Coronavirus Response Rounds 2M2, it says, but that must be. We were actually combining a previous grant into the current grant, if I understand correctly, and I believe this is going to be a Dusty Dooley item to present. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, your community development director, and I appreciate you introducing the item tonight. Council might be thinking, you know, I thought we took care of this matter at the February 24th, 2021 meeting, and if you did think that, you're exactly right. The council adopted a resolution approving an application to make use of the CDBG Round Two and Three funds, as well as the potential carryover of previous CDBG CB Round One funds. Staff was ready to hit the send button and submit our CDB application shortly after we got permission from the council on February 24th, but then we received once again some updated directions from HCD. This time, they let us know that local jurisdictions, the city of Willets, must also include any existing program income as part of our CDBG CB Two and Three applications. And that's why we're before you again tonight, is to seek permission to include the use of our existing program income or PI funds as part of this CDBG application. I'll take a minute to talk about program income. The city previously participated in CDBG programs for both housing and business rehabilitation revolving loan programs in the 90s and 2000s. That program has been active for some time now, and the city has been holding on to what is now $198,190 in the CDBG program income that has essentially been frozen. So again, what that pot of money is, is loans that have been paid back through those previous CDBG programs. HCD has not allowed us to make use of the funds as our program guidelines were outdated. The good news is that we have an opportunity to make use of these funds for the benefit of our local businesses. And I'm going to repeat some of the information that I believe I was able to share back at the February 24th meeting, so bear with me if this is new news to the council, but maybe it's a refresher, or maybe there's some folks listening in that would benefit from somewhat of a repeat of the previous discussion. But eligible use of the funds for the small businesses could include expenses such as operating capital and inventory, including payroll. It could also include improvements to your building, remodeling. I think the example I've used is, you know, widening your aisle to allow for better social distancing due to COVID. Another very important factor with this program that's likely to be well-received by businesses is that these loans can be forgiven, provided a business can show that they retain full-time equivalent positions, of which 51% are to be filled by members of lower moderate-income households. So for instance, if you have one full-time employee that's part of the household that meets the low moderate-income threshold, and you retain that employment for three months after receiving the loan, the loan is forgiven, and the business does not need to pay it back. Because the CDBG CB Two and Three funds are non-competitive, provided the application is complete to meet the threshold requirement, the city would expect to receive an award between approximately $281,000 and $358,000. The reason for that range or discrepancy is that it, we're not quite sure, the amount of Round One funding, which was $77,266, we're not clear that the amount of that Round One funding that HCD will allow the city to carry over into the $281,000 and change that's available to the city in Round Two and Three. Also recognizing that will be required to add our $198,190 and change in program income funds, the city would have up to $549,250 to support the business revolving loan program, of which at least 13% are $71,000, a little bit more than $71,000, so the funds would be available to pay staff, as well as our partners at EDFC and CDS. You know, I also want to, you know, note that staff has played around with the idea of delving into the CDBG world for a number of years. However, lack of staff time and experience and recognition that managing CDBG funds is a complex process that is unmatched by any other known grant program has led staff to focus on other grant opportunities that carry a more certainty of funding and certainly a clearer process for compliance. It's probably also worth noting that this program is different or unique in regards to other CDBG program funds, in that in this situation, and again, this is unique, the program is non-competitive. You know, staff is not going to have to spend 100 hours putting together an application that may or may not get funded. The loans do not need to be paid back, provided the business retains low moderate workers. That's a special provision related to these CDBG COVID funds, and was not necessarily the case, standard competitive CDBG funds that were available in previous years. You know, what certainly is unique and extremely important to staff is that we have been able to establish a relationship with Jeff Lucas, with Community Development Service, who's a well-respected expert navigating through the CDBG world, and I think works almost, works with nearly all of our neighboring jurisdictions, and is highly recommended and thought after. We've also received permission from the Economic Development and Financing Corporation, or EDST, to develop a subrecipient agreement and obtain their assistance as well, and we specifically found their staff member, Robert Erner, to be proficient in working with CDBG funds and revolving loan programs. So we expect to enter into a subrecipient agreement with EDFC upon being awarded the fund, and they would help us with managing the loan processing and approval process, and approval process. So again, EDFC would be our service provider, and Jeff Lucas and his folks at CDS would be available in an advisory capacity. There is no general fund money being proposed to be used to support the program, other than staff time, and staff time as well as EDST and CDS time is expected to be reimbursed by the CDBG and PI fund. We have our CDBG consultant, Jeff Lucas, is available. I believe he's on the line, Mayor, and along with myself and Jim Robbins, our community development specialists, we're all available to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. That was very informative, very well presented, and I'm glad for the review from what you already presented earlier. It sounds like a really good opportunity. So let's hear from other questions from the council before we open the public hearing. Clarifying questions. Since it was such a good presentation, there don't seem to be any questions. All right, then, if that's the case, let's open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this authorization to submit a expanded, I guess, an expanded grant application for CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant, grant funds, to provide loans to businesses that are potentially forgivable? Any public comments? Seeing none, bringing it back to the council. So anybody want to make a motion or add a comment? Jerry?
I would like to make a motion, staff representatives.
Okay, move forward. And Greta?
I will second that, and I would also like to make the comment that I am a small business owner in Willets, and full disclosure, my business will not be applying for one of these loans. of these loans.
Okay. If there are no further comments, we will have a roll call vote. Kathy?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Abstaining.
Mayor Strong.
Yes. Great. Thank you. We are not going to have any ordinance this tonight, so we're going to move to the consent calendar, item five. We have quite a few city council meeting minutes on the agenda. We also have a letter of support regarding providing public access as part of Caltrans' bridge replacement project north of here at the intersection with 160, or near the intersection with 162. But it does affect tourists and Willet citizens who want to be able to get down to the Eel River. And item C in the consent calendar is a budget amendment to accommodate the purchase of a mower for park maintenance. Item D is a resolution approving the 2021 classification and compensation schedule and a resolution for wage adjustments for swimming pool staff. E is catastrophic leave revision to revision to our personnel policies and procedure manual. And F is a resolution, and then we're going to have an addition to that, resolution authorizing participation in California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, known as CIRA, effective July 1st, for our California Intergovernmental Risk Authority. And this is to join an expanded JPA to handle insurance for liability on Willets, for the city. And the additional resolution was what we added to the agenda, which allows us to apply to the Director of Industrial Relations or Consent to Self-Insurance. Does the council wish to pull any item for further discussion and separate vote from this consent calendar? Jerry?
Okay, I'm not so much older, maybe Brian can explain. Item C, the mower and source of money to the community, I think it's.
Okay, so I guess if we're allowed to ask clarifying questions before we decide to pull anything off the consent calendar. So Brian, go ahead.
Okay, so what you're looking at there with item C is a budget amendment. The amendment essentially consists of transferring funds that have been secured by the city through the bulk water sales of the non-portable well over at the parks. This was a map throughout last year. It was a good year, unfortunately, with the water sale. And the understanding when that fund was created was the funds that had been collected would be utilized for park maintenance, capital improvement projects associated with the parks. And basically, public workshops identified that the mower that is needing replacement is nearly 20 plus years old. It's been held together with baling wire, soup cans, and duct tape. So instead of tapping into general funds, we're utilizing the revenue that was generated from the sales at the bulk water site.
Okay. Greta?
And also for the public's clarification, I just wanted to mention that rather, the reason that we're asking this to happen now as an amendment to this year's budget rather than waiting until next year's budget is because, of course, we're going into high mow season, so time is of the essence.
And I appreciate that clarification. Just one other item to tag on there. Essentially, the council would see this once being transferred into the 2122 budget anyway. We're just, we want to identify that there's an opportunity to acquire this mower right now, each stock. This is the height of the mowing season. We have a lot of league play out there. Our parks are now open to the public, and they are requiring a lot of attention.
Okay. If there is no other questions regarding the consent calendar and no request to pull any items from it, I will open a public hearing if anyone in the public has any comments or questions about it. And hearing none, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. What's Jerry? Jerry moved approval, and somebody like to second that? Suprina, are you seconding? Okay. All right, so Kathy, ready for a roll call?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong.
Yes. Oh, and just for the record, when I go through the minutes, sometimes I do some little minor corrections or wording change, and Kathy just incorporates them. So they aren't always exactly verbatim what was in our packet, but they are definitely the same content. So I just wanted to mention that, so correct a few minor, minor things.
On that note as well, I received some, correct, comments from Greta as well, and that was passed along to Kathy for stimulation into the minutes.
Okay. So unless there's a substantive change involved, you know, something that the minutes have wrong, then we don't need to pass those minor corrections through, you know, we don't have to read them all again.
Yes, you're correct. Basically typos, maybe a misplaced word, something was dropped.
Yeah.
We achieve excellence here.
So I just wanted that for the record. Moving on, now we have some wonderful monthly activity reports in our packet. And unless there's questions about those, we, those are just informational. We do not have a separate commission of agenda items, such as the planning commission. And we now are going to go to item eight, city managers' reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So two items on there. Well, actually, there's one. I wanted to introduce a kind of a update on where we are financially as we move into budget preparation. But as previously noted, our finance manager, who contract Andy Heath, has been working with his other clients. He's short-staffed and moving everything around, as other clients have noted. I couldn't get their report that I was looking for yet, so he'll be in the office next week, so hopefully we can get something going there. But we are making progress. I've had spent his time and effort on budget prep and prepare for the audit that is looming for the city, so that's that. The other item on there is a discussion that is referenced through a memo that was in your packet. We're at the time now where I think we need to start considering how does the council want to respond to the virtual meeting opportunities, or do we go on-site? There are some pros and cons to both scenarios. During our county COVID-19 update call this morning, it has been noted that the county is in yellow tier. We are officially in yellow tier, which is very similar to the provisions that are identified in the orange tier. Back to Corin, still, will still express concerns about public gatherings in confined spaces. There are still reservations about how that can be managed. I just want to put that out there. I'm not trying to create a fear monger or anything like that, but that's something we have to address in our rollout for opening up these meetings.
So this is a discussion item. Anybody have some questions or comments regarding the prospect of opening up our meetings in person in the near future?
I do.
Go ahead, Suprina.
Opening them up as soon as we can. I don't want to place any undue burden on the community staff in preparing for it, but I am eager to get back to meeting in person and giving the public an opportunity to see us in person. This, you know, like with distance learning, distance meetings is not always beneficial for all members of the public. Not everybody has a stable internet connection, so I'm looking forward to in-person.
Any other comments?
I appreciate that Brian has brought this to the table, so to speak. I think it's time that we start really planning for reopening City Hall and having public council meetings once again. But I do appreciate that he's doing it in a thoughtful manner and finding ways to prepare City Hall and council chambers for maximum safety for the staff, council, and the general public. I like the idea of maybe waiting until, I think, after the budget is passed. I think, I understand that there are people who are frustrated that they don't have access to the virtual meetings, but I do think that we have more likelihood to get more people engaged in the budget process virtually, because we can have more people come into these virtual meetings than who would be able to come into council chambers. And it is such an important topic that having maximum public engagement, I think, is better for that topic. That's where I'm at.
I also think it's important to not put too much burden on the staff to make the kinds of improvements that are going to be required to open up the council chambers, you know, to give us plenty of time, because they're also working on developing the budget and everything else that's on their plate. So I think a realistic timeframe would be the meetings starting in July. And I want to also make sure that people that might not feel like coming down to city council or to City Hall, they of course can always comment in writing, but maybe we should also do what the county has been doing recently, which is have a recorded message line for anybody that doesn't want to come in in person to comment on specific agenda items by phone in advance, if that's not too much of a burden on our city clerk, Kathy. Because it is, the advantage side of meeting electronically is that people don't have to go anywhere, they can still be in their pajamas or whatever, and they can still comment. So if there's a way to do a little bit of both, I'm looking for that. So any other comments regarding, yes, Jerry?
I kind of wanted to echo what Ed said, and I even thought maybe we could meet as a council, but it seems like that creates its own issues itself, and so I kind of also want to elaborate.
Yeah, as far as a hybrid thing, if we had an in-person meeting going, we would have to have equipment to allow a simultaneous electronic attendance. So that might be a little challenging. So I think once we go to in-person, we would have to ask people that want to comment to either come to the meeting or do it in advance. That's just to keep it a little simple, because, you know, setting up a whole electronic system during the meeting might be problematic, but.
You know, we looked at the, you know, hybrid option, and there's a few communities that are doing that. Their council chambers or their meeting rooms are a little bit more accommodating to that requirement. Our council chambers, right now, currently is not ideal for projections and setting up in the media world. So then we would probably look, move over to the community center, and that brings into play a whole set of questions and comments and retrofitting that space for meetings. I mean, all I'm looking for tonight, and I'm not looking for a drop dead date or something like that, but I just want to make a statement to the council that, you know, once again, even in the yellow tier blueprint for opening that is being presented statewide, you will be limited to 50% maximum capacity in the council chambers. Social distancing protocols will still be necessary. Mask wearing will still be required. So there is, you're not going to escape that, and you're probably not going to escape that for any time in the near future. So those are the things, those are hard points we have to consider. Like was noted, we would have to ramp up our activities to make the council chambers able to accommodate meetings with those restrictions in place. So, you know, we fill the council chambers with staff, council members. That leaves a handful of people, and that's what I don't want to do, and I don't want to turn people away at the door. It's not ideal. This virtual platform does accommodate a lot of people, and they can have the opportunity to engage with us. Not ideal, but it's kind of, you know, the best we have right now. You know, towards, we move into June and July, we should know a little bit more from the state and the county health officials on how we're going to roll out into the summer and fall. The big thing is, we can meet outdoors. Apparently, outdoor events are reducing the restrictions, so that's always an opportunity. I would always love to have a public meeting outside.
The other part that I just, you know, you just reminded me, mask wearing. And one of the really nice things about these meetings is we can actually see each other's faces and hear the words better. When you're wearing a mask, sometimes it's really much harder to understand what's being said and reading people's expressions. So in some respects, I'm pretty happy with meeting electronically and not in a big rush to go in person. So if it delays, I would be fine with that personally. And it might be a long time for mask wearing. So anyway, is that enough feedback, or do you want a little more direction, Brian?
No, I think that's good. I mean, there's two options, there's two platforms we're looking at. One is the council meetings, and that's kind of what we're talking about here. We're also looking at opening City Hall. And, you know, we're looking at internally what some options are. Like we said before, we're looking at some renovations. We don't want to open and enclose because there are renovations. We're still trying to nail down our scheduling for renovations, so we want to see how that happens and then open up City Hall. But City Hall, we can, we can get going on that within a reasonable timeframe. We have a better plan for that. It's the council session, and it's how the council wants to engage the public from this point on. That's what I wanted to present to the council tonight.
Yeah, so let me just get a, like, straw vote or whatever, raise your hand, about the idea of if we were to start doing in-person meetings with the constraints that Brian's talking about, and having all of us have to wear masks, does that change your eagerness to go to in-person meetings, or are you still eager? Just a quick comment from other council members. Greta?
That does not change my position. I'm still anxious to get back to in-person meetings, even if we have to wear masks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, it doesn't change my position because it's not about me. It's about our service to the public and what's best for the public. If wearing a mask is what needs to be done, then we wear a mask. If it's best interest of public to be online, then that's what we need to do.
Jerry?
Kind of the same thing. I wouldn't mind wearing the mask, but it's how many people can we accommodate and that, so gives us the more things we'll have luck. And it's not like we're really flush with people, so I wouldn't hate to have to let staff people just be gatekeepers, and then you know there's going to be folks that are going to be upset in good capacity, et cetera. We could schedule an outside meeting or something, I don't know. That's kind of a, that's what I.
Larry, do you have an opinion?
The only opinion I have is I think that we ought to do it whether we wear
whether we wear a mask or not. I mean, I think the people, I mean, I won't be able to see whether you're frowning or laughing or whatever, but with a mask. But I'm for the letting the people see us. Thank you.
Okay. So there you have it. All right. And that's your report. Brian, you're done? Yes. The next item is department, department recommendations and expedited. No?
You actually have the review and adoption of your 2021 goals.
Of course, I skipped that over. That's not good.
Oh, we're not going to let that go tonight.
Nobody would let me get away with that. Okay. So we have our adoption of the 2021 goals. There was information in the packet, obviously, about that. And Brian, you're going to present. Go ahead.
Yeah, so once again, the council have a special meeting on April 7th, earlier this month. Bob Rolfe was able to facilitate that session, and he's not here tonight. But we think we're right there to get it over the finish line with the confidence that the council wants to have in these goals. There was a meaningful discussion on that April 7th meeting. And we basically allowed Sabrina to look over the presented goals once again, had the opportunity to re-score them. Bob took the revised score sheet from Sabrina, have you related that with the other ones? And that is what is presented to you tonight. There was a slight shift in one of the goals, and, you know, one placed above the other. But I think at this point, we have 12 meaningful, very productive goals that sets a nice tone for the organization. If one is ranked three, one is ranked four or five, I think at this point, I think ranking is incidental to basically the message that the council wants to present to the organization and the community, that these are 12 important tasks, and we will do the best we can to allocate resources and staff and time to achieve them.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Again, this would just be clarifications, and then we'll open the public hearing, and then like a further discussion if needed. Yes, Greta?
I just also wanted to share a comment that Brian made to me earlier this week that I thought was reassuring. So if anyone in the public is looking at this and thinking, well, this item number nine, I think, is, you know, much more important, the comment that Brian made was if funds or staff time or something shifts and the city is able to work on one of those goals that's lower on the list within a closer period of time, they will do that. It's not like, oh, well, it's number nine, so we can't possibly work on it right now. So just if anybody is out there thinking, gosh, I don't want these things to wait, that's not the intent of making this list that, you know, we have to do them in order. If the staffing is there, if the money is there, if the timing is right, all of these things are what have been presented by the council as important projects to move the city forward.
Yes, and added to that is that some of these things fall in different staff people's bailiwick. And so some of them will be worked on as a highest priority in, say, Public Works Department, even though it might be number eight or nine or whatever on the list, but it's their priority. And so different staffing levels, again, as staff and money permits, they aren't necessarily going to be done in, you know, first priority is the first thing we do, and then we get to number two. They can all be done independently, not independently, but simultaneously to the extent we have resources to do it. So it's kind of what Greta said. So of a public hearing, if anyone out there would like to comment about the process that we went through or the recommended list of priorities? Any public comments? And I'm not hearing any. So bring it back up here. And I just remembered that long ago, I had a high priority for having a couple, one or two other north-south connector streets in our city. And particularly was thinking of connecting over Railroad Avenue over to Bechtel is one of them, and the Locust over to Highway 20. Is it Locust? Am I remembering the right one? Anyway, yeah. Those would be long-term expensive projects. So they aren't on the list at the moment, but maybe next year, if we're swimming in clover and money and, I want to, I don't want those to be completely forgotten because we do have a complete bottleneck there on Main Street. And if there were ever a blockage where we couldn't get through Main Street, we would be kind of in a pickle. It almost happened one time. There was a truck accident, but it was farther back, and we were able to reroute. So anyway. Yes, Greta?
I move to accept the resolution.
Thank you very much. And Jerry, you're seconding? Okay. We have a motion and a second. So Kathy, little call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Stransky.
Good.
Rodriguez. Merson.
Yes. Wow, that's a very major accomplishment, by the way. Thank you, Brian, and thank you for Robert Brown's help on that and for all of the input from the public and the council. We really needed to do an update on our goals, and that's very helpful. And we will revisit it.
It was a tremendous team effort from the public, as well as staff and the council. So thank you for providing that blueprint for how we need to operate and move forward. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Right. And as Brian has noted, we will be revisiting it. You know, we'll look at how we're doing in six months, and we will probably make revisions as we go. It's not sealed in concrete, but it is very helpful to have a timeline. Okay. We received some very nice, oh, yeah, okay, department recommendations. I was about to skip again. Adoption, we did that. The department monthly reports were very, very informative. And thank you so much to all of our departments for providing those to us. And this is our opportunity, if anybody, either from the staff or from the council, want to add anything or clarify or comment on anything on those monthly staff reports. Anybody?
Staff reports were very comprehensive. I felt like as a council member, it gave me a very clear picture of what was happening in each department. So thank you for the time it took to do the work as well as write the summaries. I know that's an investment of time that's appreciated.
Thank you, Greta.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, and I wanted to say to anybody from the public who's listening and anybody from the press who's listening, I highly encourage you to spend, you know, 15, 20 minutes reading these monthly staff reports. They are very detailed, and they actually are pretty cool. I mean, it's pretty neat to hear about the things that are happening at the city and to realize how much work is going on on your behalf to make things run smoothly and run well. So kudos to the staff, and thank you, Brian, for starting these reports. The format is great. I really enjoyed reading them.
Thank you. I think I saw Chief Lizaraga have his hand up.
Yeah, just real quick, I kind of wanted to update. Wasn't able to do it in time for the agenda, but the first part of our report, we have the monthly achievements and activities, and we kind of give a breakdown of calls for service, cases, arrests, and citations. I just wanted to let you know, in the spirit of clarification and transparency, the March numbers that you see there are through March 17th. I did go ahead and get the numbers for all of March. And I just wanted to put them out there, so the public has them, so you have them. Next month, I'll be giving you all of the totals for April, and then maybe a year-to-date totals to that date. But for totals for March, calls for service were 766. Total cases were 96. Arrests were 32. And citations were 48. So I just wanted to put that out, let you know that your officers are working hard and are very committed to the task, and they're doing some good work. So if anybody has any questions, I'm available.
At some point, it would be nice to see a sort of overtime spread on how has that changed from year to year? Are there seasons when we have a lot more activity or not? Just so we have a bigger, what's the word, bigger perspective than month to month, but, you know, not in any rush at all for that. But I just, I'm just curious, like, you know, have our calls and responses been growing every year, or are they staying about the same, or what? Just curious.
Typically, what I'm thinking is kind of a, you know, at the end of the year or the beginning of the year, do a year-to-date breakdown and do a comparison for the last five years. It usually gives you a better grasp of if things are either constant or they're increasing or decreasing. So I'm kind of hoping to be able to do that. And, but like I said, the full year will really give you, maybe a taste for what's going on here.
Okay. Greta?
Chief Lizaraga, during, early on during the pandemic, there was comments, particularly from law enforcement around the county, that they were seeing a real uptick in violent crime because of the stress of the pandemic and the shelter in place. But your predecessor, Chief Allen, had indicated we weren't seeing that in Willets, and that our crime rates were staying pretty steady. Do you have any further, now that we've, you know, almost been a year through this, do you have any further insight into how crime changed here in Willets? Or David?
I think it, I would agree with his assessment that it kind of stayed relatively flat. I'm sure we had some spikes in certain areas. But the pandemic really, it really caused a lot of activity to be minimized or end altogether in some instances. So, yeah, we haven't really seen an uptick in violent crime or anything like that here, since I've been here and been aware of it. Whatever does come up, we try to focus in on it and, you know, get it resolved before it continues to grow or spreads.
Sabrina, did I see your hand up?
Yes, you did. Just that Brittany from the Police Department in the fall of 2020 provided us with some statistics and a three-year comparison. So she's already done quite a bit of footwork to bring that data to us. It just needs to be updated, so we should check in. Maybe Chief can check in with her.
Okay. Sure will.
Great. There are no other comments? Oh, yes, Jerry?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff. Just kind of nice to sit down and just get that in. Greta said I would encourage public meetings.
Are those provided? Well, obviously, the agenda packet goes to the local papers. Might be good to update with the numbers that Chief Lizaraga just gave us and make sure that those perhaps go separately to the two newspapers because they might have neglected to see it on the agenda somehow. I mean, I think it's really worth, yeah, publicizing.
Yeah, I was talking about it last month, you know, maybe a quick little formatting, and we can get it posted on the website. I think we already started that process. We can get it distributed to the paper. And just for clarification, it was my editorial oversight with Chief Lizaraga's numbers, so. No problem. Oh, no problem.
Okay. All right. So the next item is City Council.
I'm sorry. This is Jeremy Bronco.
Oh, yes.
Project manager. I wanted to add one thing to the engineering report. I just wanted to let everybody know, next week, the paving restoration in the Central Street area for the PG&E project is going to begin. So there's going to be intermittent road closures and no parking along Central and along the side streets for, I'm thinking, probably a couple weeks. There's quite a bit of restoration to do.
Okay.
Probably about as disruptive as it's been for the last year that they've been working there. Hopefully, we're all kind of used to it.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Sure.
All right. So let's move on to City Council announcements, communications, and reports. Any City Council members have any reports for us or announcements? Yes, Greta?
Karen Mattson from the Medicine Oak Town Museum put together a nice gathering last week of Commercial Street agencies. She invited the city, Charter School, the museum, of course, the library, the fires, the meditation, the Medicine Oak Coast Resource Conservation District, which is now down there in the old Coleman House and property. And it was a tennis pie, and of course, Imagination Station, representing the business interests there on Commercial Street. And it was just a nice gathering of people to hear what's happening on Commercial and how each of the groups are going to reach out to the public as everything starts to kind of reopen here. And just remind the community what great resources are down there, including our fabulous city parks and sports fields. And there should be more coming from this group as people are getting to know each other and planning for an exciting future when we can start gathering in public and sharing our public spaces. So hats off to Karen for putting that together. MCAG will meet next week, so I don't have any report there. And I think that's it for me.
I have a question. First of all, do you have, maybe Chris Wilkes is still on the line. Is there a projected date that the new fire station might be open? And the other question is, Spare Time Supply, are they, what's their timetable?
I don't think Chris is still on the call. But he did indicate in that meeting that their aim is for a grand opening on September 11th. So on 9/11, they'd like to have a community festival welcoming, celebrating our new completed firehouse. It probably will be open before that. I think he thought maybe even by late July or August, but that they would have a grand opening in September if everything is safe and good. And I forgot, Spare Time was also on that meeting, talked about their plans for their new building. And I don't recall if they gave us a date on when they would have that facility open, but that primarily will be wholesale, so not a super draw for the general public.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council member reports? Yes, Sabrina?
Yeah, I was contacted, and I know that a few of you may have been contacted too, by Karen Osland. She would like the council to entertain at least hearing about a potential for an ordinance that would protect our youth from candy-flavored vape. And so I'd like the council's blessing to put it on a future agenda when we don't have a lot on the agenda, to just listen to the idea. The county's already passed one, and I'm hoping that maybe the city of Willets, in an effort to protect our youth, will consider removing candy-flavored vapes from our shelves locally.
I'm in favor of hearing about that. I'm the driver of it, hearing about that. I think all it takes is a couple of us, so it's up to Brian to agendize, yeah.
And then the last thing is that during our meeting, I became a grandmother again. I'm waiting for the picture to pop up. So if you saw me smiling at odd moments, I'm super excited. The baby's been born in the last 20 minutes, so, yeah, grab me if you number four.
Is the middle name going to be all our initials or something?
It'd be weird. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah, if it was me, I would have been hopping up and down and leaving the meeting. Anyway, but it's number four for you, so it's more routine. Okay. I will just quickly say that Economic Development Financing Corporation will be meeting on May 13th, and the ENSWA, the Mendo Recycle, will be meeting on May 20th, both after our first May meeting. So I'll remind you then that I don't think there's anything else to report from those two agencies. Jerry, did you have anything?
Yeah, I, basically, I've got Laffco, I believe, on Monday, and then I've got Cities later in the month of May, have a division meeting. Probably going to be online. Heart Hospital is looking at, or Venice is looking at Blue Zone thing, and I'm hoping maybe we can get them to come and at least do an informational talking to us. Kind of the Blue Zone. It's kind of a, it's a Blue Zone, and it has a lot to do with the health. I'll try and get with them and get some information I can pass on to Brian. Regarding debate thing, I think I would also like to kind of balance out Police Department and Jim has, does any research there in the county near past, so that I hate to pass an ordinance that doesn't touch. It's hard to influence also, so that's something I would say. That's kind of what I, I would like to see more thoughtfully, unless we just have an informational conversation.
You're talking about the vaping issue?
Vaping, yeah. I would, yeah, I would like to see pros and cons. One thing, you know, I want peace, but it's going to bankrupt us. That's one. And I think it's a good thing.
Well, what I'm, Jerry, what I'm asking for to begin with is just an introduction of the topic. It wouldn't be anything that we would be voting on any ordinance in the initial presentation. And then if the council is interested, then we can move from there, if that's all right.
Yeah, and again, I, well, see, what I would like is, maybe that Jim has a chance to kind of, on that day, be able to say, these are some things to consider and then if he decides to bring them, they should come. So I would leave that up to Brian's. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right. Larry, did you have any reports from any committees?
I do not.
Okay. That is, I guess, if there are any other City Council reports? And then we have Good and Welfare's. Any items there that you'd like to chime in on?
We already got it with Sabrina's new grandbaby.
That's right. I will just mention that I went on a police ride-along with Chris Kusmarky, and I also went on a tour of the water plant and the wastewater treatment plant two separate days for those two, for the police versus the water and sewer plant. And those were both very, very instructive for me to see firsthand. Really appreciate the staff taking the time to tell me your man. And we are going to have upcoming another town hall with our supervisor, John Hascheck, which will be, I believe, May 23rd, which will be in the later afternoon. And that same day is going to be the cleaners' plant sale. So a lot of gardening activity going on. Tune in and make your gardens and enjoy our local spring. So, yeah, Greta?
Just a quick Good and Welfare. If any city staff are listening, getting a lot of compliments at the book juggler for the newly planted street trees, they're leafing out and looking really lovely. So a lot of nice feedback from the community. So thank you to particularly Community Development, Engineering, Public Works for your involvement in those, that project.
And I noticed that they're hand-watering them to make sure they're staying healthy. That's great.
Just the ones that aren't tied into the irrigation system. The others are being automatically watered.
Great. Okay, that's any other Good and Welfare's? And if not, we will adjourn the open meeting, and we will need to go into a closed session, which is a conference with our legal counsel pursuant to government code 4956.9 regarding the litigation with Good Guys Gym.
Maybe if I could, I'd just like to clarify that the correct title of that litigation is City of Willets versus Jesse Carter and Flight and King doing business as the Good Guys Gym.
Thank you. And it is about a little more than five after eight. So we have about a 10-minute break, so like a quarter after eight, we convene our closed session. If that's okay with everybody, just have a, yes, Greta?
Do we make a five-minute break?
Well, by the time we actually adjourn, it'll be about seven minutes, so, yeah. But let's just say quarter, quarter past, so it's an even number, if that's okay? Don't dabble. Okay.
Bye.
See you in a few minutes. You're adjourned.